I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Call.
Councilor Coast, here. Matthews?
Here.
Huna?
Present.
Chamberlain?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
And Frye?
Here.
All present.
Motion to approve the previous meeting minutes?
So.
Second.
Yes, you can intercede motion with Fred seconding to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Council Matthews?
Yes.
Council Huna?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
And Frye? Motion carries.
We're weighing it tonight.
Going forward now?
Yeah, we're done, right.
Names of individuals wishing to address council. Kevin Stamm, Sarah's Garden Handicapped Playground Project. Step up.
Sorry, first time over to council. This table right here?
You want to do there or?
I'm not impressed today. I have here three quotes that we have received from playground companies on our project. What we are trying to do at Sarah's Garden, is everyone familiar with New Horizons Academy, Sarah's Garden School for special needs students? Alright, what we're trying to do at Sarah's Garden is put together a, build a handicapped, not just accessible, but inclusive playground for our students. What you have in town here are very nice playgrounds, but nothing that is handicap-inclusive. So nothing, there are ramps, not accessible. There's nothing that those kids in wheelchairs can do. So, just to basically go over things here, what we are trying to do, first some stats on New Horizons. 2012, 2000 school year, we had just six students. To start this past school year, we started with 24, we now have 40. We even have families that have relocated from Alabama, Mississippi, and Virginia. Because there's nothing like New Horizons in those states for their children. So, the 2014, 2015 school year, we are looking at an additional 20 to 25 new students that are on the waiting list next year. So, currently, our students, their recess is spent in the parking lot at the Hope Center for New Horizons. And basically, what they have is they have bicycles, tricycles, and big wheels, and one basket that they can shoot baskets at during their recess. So we really are pushing for a playground in the worst way. Unfortunately, we don't have anything for our wheelchair-bound students. So they are pushed around the parking lot by a teacher or aide during the day, or during the recess period. Our goal is to construct, as I stated earlier, a true handicapped, accessible, and inclusive playground. To meet the needs of all of our students. The playground would be open to the public 24/7/365. So it's not something that's just going to be ours, it's everyone's, it's the community's. So, we want to make that very clear. The playground would be unique to anything else in Northwest Ohio because there is not a true handicap-inclusive playground anywhere in Northwest Ohio. And I can tell you that Dave Burkholder, our school administrator, has been all over Ohio, Indiana, and Michigan for his grandson Jax. So he knows very well the playgrounds in those three states. The other thing is, this would be a community build. We're trying to save as much money as possible on this project. So this would be a true community build project as well. And we, because we are a private, non-chartered school, we do not receive any funding from state or federal agencies. So we have to, like, right now, we have fundraisers going with the Volunteer Firemen's Association and departments throughout Northwest Ohio, trying to raise money that will allow us to put towards the playground itself. We also have a charity golf event coming up, May 30th, at Ironwood. That money will go towards this as well. We also have a fundraiser coming up in November with Don's Automotive Group is hosting a casino night for us that will raise funds for this playground as well. So we are, on our end, working towards raising money for this playground, for the kids as well. But obviously, fundraisers aren't going to be enough to raise the money needed for a playground. If you take a look in your folder, you will see that the playgrounds that have been proposed to us, and I went from most expensive to least expensive. David Williamson Associates is from Alliance, Ohio. That total amount was $287,000. Now, $250,000 of that is the rubber surfacing that is needed to be compliant for a handicap playground. The next one is from Schneider Associates, who is in the Cleveland area as well, and theirs was $267,000. Theirs was scaled back quite a bit from the David Williamson Associates group, but still, if you look on that quote, you can see that $83,000 was for the surfacing alone. And then Little Tykes was the least expensive so far, but this quote does not include the rubber surface that is needed for a handicap playground. And that quote is $122,000, and they said, plan on $75,000 to $80,000 for rubber surfacing for this project as well. We are working with other organizations as well. We are working with the Ruiterie Foundation. We are working with Ruiterie International, and we are working with the Fulton County Commissioners, trying to come up with money for this playground project.
I mean, for this project to happen, you have to have that surface, right, Kevin?
Right. Now ideally, as far as a design standpoint goes, the most expensive one is a design that we would like to have, but we're not going for that exact, we're going to keep it as low as possible, being a nonprofit, actually, obviously. But the design itself, because we have pre-K through high school students coming to New Horizons, we like the design because it shows the different shapes for the kids, especially the pre-K kids, as well as it will be different colors, different color schemes. So that will give the kids a chance to, or the teachers a chance to reinforce things as well through the recess and that. But, again, cheapest will be the obvious way that we go on this.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You had mentioned about opening it up to the public every day, is that what you said?
Yes.
Even though you're not getting, you're private, not getting state funding, do you still have to follow state codes as putting this playground in?
I don't know that we do, but we are not going to take any chances.
Right, because I know there are some state codes with that, with opening up to the public if you are a school or any type of service with children and certain hours and stuff when the children are there. That's why I just kind of red-flagged that, but, you know, I had a private school myself, and that was one of the things we were not able to do. So, that might be something to check into.
But the whole, we're going to follow our mission, which is we're not going to exclude anyone?
Right, and you can, you can open it up, but the one state rule and code is that you are not allowed to, when you have the children out, to have anybody be coming in off the streets with the children as a code. So that was the one thing that just kind of made me think, you know, 24/7, it might not be able to. But other than that, I think it's an amazing gesture to put this in and open it up to the public. Especially in that area of town.
Where are you planning on putting us at, Kevin? I mean, in reference to the railroad and the building that you're adding on to?
Have you been by lately to see the current expansion that's going on at the Hope Center? It will be straight east of that expansion that's going on. Because the eventual plans are, for New Horizons Academy, we want to then turn the building and go towards the train tracks. And what we're going to do then is hopefully have a therapy pool for our students, especially our CP students. Because most of our students, it's either autism, CP, Down Syndrome, spinal bifida, traumatic brain injury. Those are the majority of what our students suffer from.
Seeking, I think as our, we're told revolving loan fund possibilities here, I mean, is that the idea?
Yes, there's revolving loan fund possibilities. It would be a multiple project as long as the accessibility issues could be addressed. That's a possibility. I mean, there's other eligibility requirements that we need to be looked into.
In the form of a grant?
In the form of a grant, yes.
And I'm taking it that you are working with Kevin on this?
Yeah, I've talked to Kevin a few times, and I know, like you said, he's talking to the county commissioners also. So there's revolving loan fund dollars there. If anything, we're to move forward, I think they're hoping to get a conjoined effort with the county and city.
We currently have $35,000 on hand for this project, and we're hoping for an additional, the golf body will bring in $15,000 probably, and then fireman's raffle, I'm hoping for $10,000 to $15,000 from that as well. And then I have no idea, the casino night is something new for us, but Don Hiatt was excited about putting it on for us, so. So far, I've heard good things about that, but I don't have any numbers for you on that.
Nowhere will that take place after, you know?
That'll be at Founder's Hall, Souter Village.
They have a good salesman in charge there, so.
Actually, Becky Kooch has been terrific. She's done a terrific job of that.
You got any questions?
No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing, Kevin. Having gone down the playground route once before with Imagination Kingdom, careful on the sound. Careful on the sound coming from the playground. I see one of the plans has a sound garden, so just be careful on the sound. We've traveled down that road with Imagination Kingdom, the sound issue.
With the neighbors.
Do you want these back?
No, those are pretty good.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Michelle Ryder, ARS Service, update.
Hello again. Some of you were not here when I presented the first time. I want to introduce Tom Taylor. He's one of our vice presidents. He's here with me tonight to help answer any questions. I'm here tonight basically to share some information that we gathered while we were out on the road in the last couple of weeks, and also to answer any questions or concerns you may have. We feel it's very important to stay in communication with you all as the process continues and make the education process as simple for you, so you may communicate that to any residents that may come to you for answers. We have had literally thousands of phone calls. We are not discouraged by that. We are encouraged by that because that gives us an opportunity to discuss and talk about what is actually happening. I think the largest misconception that we are dealing with right now is that something has changed. Nothing has changed. We have not changed anything other than the actual tag. What has changed is that we are actually abiding by the regulations. And we're asking that 30-gallon bags be tagged. That has always been, we have in the past been known to take things that we shouldn't have taken. That was a goodwill measure. Unfortunately, checks and balances are indicating that that is no longer possible for us. And we want to simply say, please, we'll follow the rules, and you follow the rules, and we'll all work together on this. We've been very flexible. I've been communicating via email with Mr. Richardson and also with Mrs. Murphy. And, again, we've been, we've been trying to be flexible with this. For instance, they said, "We don't understand why we can't use our old tags." We've spent the money for the old tags, but we don't understand why we cannot use the old tags. So as a concession measure, what we have done is we have said, okay, logistically, those old tags will go away eventually, okay? Because only new tags are in circulation. If you properly tag your bag with the old tag, we'll still take it, okay? We're not trying to be difficult in any way, shape, or form. I did provide pictures. Now, again, we're trying to be discreet. We didn't map these, we didn't give you addresses or anything like that. What we wanted you to see is what we see when we go out. I rode the route for three days with the gentlemen because I thought it was important that I see what they see, so that we're not just asking them to do something and then not be able to put it into actual practice when we're out. One of the reasons, the biggest, one of the biggest questions is, why can't I put my container on my tag, or my tag on my container any longer? If you look at the bottom center picture, this is why we can't tag containers. I don't know where that, where that tag starts and stops. I can't expect my shager or my driver to know where that tag starts or stops. Is that a new tag? Is that an old tag? Is that a good tag? We actually had, in our public exchanges, had some very interesting discovery issues where we had residents say, "Oh yeah, I just cut those sheets in half and wrapped half the tag around my bag, and you take it." So yeah, we're being a little, we're being a little more stickler now, and we do have these tags. Now, these tags are adhesive. We've also had people call and say, "Why do I have to stick it through the truck?" Okay, you don't have to stick it through the truck. They are adhesive, they bend here, and they bend here. That's two or three together. However, they wrap around like your bag, just like this. So the purposes, do not remove, you just leave that in there. That's a security measure for us. If we feel that it's a difficult tag to identify, what we then do is we can open this up, and there is a serial code in there that we can access, so that we know that that is a legitimate tag. So again, we're not trying to make it more difficult for the residents. We're saying, what is difficult is to decipher what this is. So we're asking simply that you put the bag on the tag, so when the garbage goes away, so does the tag. And that way, we know next week, it's new tags and they're good tags. Some other things on the pictures that you can see. 30-gallon bag, we see a lot of 50, 60-gallon bags, all crammed into a 30-gallon container. Okay, your container is a 30-gallon container, but when I pull that bag out and it keeps coming and coming and coming and coming and coming, and there's 60 gallons of trash in there, we would like two tags on that bag. That's all we're asking, two tags instead of one. You can still put it in the container, we'll pull it out, we'll put it in the truck that way. Again, the middle on the right on the front page, that was one consecutive bag, very thin bag. We pulled the bag out and it did break all over the street because it was a very, one of those real thin plastic bags. And again, this is our job, we're not complaining, we're saying, just could you put two tags on that? Because it's clearly more than 30-gallon. I brought a 30-gallon bag, reasonable size, I can get a lot in this. And all we're asking you to do is wrap it or tie it, some people have the string ties. Tie it, wrap your tag around the top of the bag. If you want to put two of these in a container, that's great. We'll grab both bags out, and we'll put, we'll take both bags. But what we're seeing then, if you flip onto maybe page two here, what you can see is that what we actually get, unfortunately, is top center bags with no tags whatsoever, no tags at all, anywhere, on the container, on the bag. And if you flip to page three, you can see these clearly like the loose trash. We had residents chasing us, saying, "You just want to put more, more plastic in the landfill?" No, we don't. This is a 50-gallon cart. If you want to put trash in there like that, we don't prefer it, we will take it. We're asking for two tags, because you're over your 30-gallon limit. Lots and lots of loose trash again. This comes with bags on top of it. So they'll put a 30 or 40-gallon bag on top of it with one tag, and then expect us to take everything in the bottom that's loose as well. Again, two tags, that's all we're asking for. On the third page, you'll see the big bags on top stacked on top in the containers with one tag on top. And again, these are just, we just want to share with you what we're seeing. If somebody says, I guess, on the last page there in the photo, second one down on the left, that really, that really shows it. I mean, bag on bag on bag on bag, and we've got one tag on the container, which is clearly more than a 30-gallon container and/or bag on top to boot. So again, we're trying to be very reasonable. We've had a lot of calls from our elderly citizens who say, "I use kitchen bags." Do I have to tag every bag? You certainly do not have to tag every 13-gallon kitchen bag. Do the conversion. Okay, three 13-gallon bags is roughly 33 gallons of trash, right? 36, 39. Stick a tag on that. Our conversion ratio roughly is if they're really packed full, we'll do two 13-gallon bags to one tag. If they're half-full, cart-full, then we'll take the three for one tag. Some people put out Walmart bags. And again, we're not asking that somebody tag every single Walmart bag that they put out. For those people, I don't have a real good suggestion, maybe store it up and put it out once a month. Because, I mean, a Walmart bag is, if you're going to set just a Walmart bag out, we do need a tag on it in some way, shape, or form. Maybe collect a little bit of more of that together, so you can benefit the use of your tag. Price, again, price is not changed. We've got a lot of comment on Facebook, "My garbage bill triples." "You're trying to charge us more money." We're not. None of that changed. Alls we're asking is that you properly tag the refuse that's out, and be reasonable. We're reasonable, we have flexibility, we always have, we always will. But there are a lot of extra items, you'll notice. People set a lot of extra items out. They'll put their garbage out with one tag, and then we'll have a sweeper and a lamp and some other stuff. And again, we're happy to take that, if you could just stick a tag on it, that's all we're asking. So anyway, that's kind of our perspective, but I also want to answer any questions or concerns that any of you may have. Clear up any confusion that there is, so that we can all stay on the same page. So I'd just like to open it up to any questions.
Did you get a lot of returns?
Get a lot of returns?
Right, between the people coming and exchanging them. Did you get a lot or not?
We went through 10,000 tags when we exchanged the tags. So again, I will, to that, I will say, we still have people saying, "I don't know what you're talking about, I have no idea what's going on here." You can educate as best as you can and hope for the best. There's always going to be a group of people that somewhere, somehow, did not realize what was happening. So therefore, we try to educate them when they call and ask questions. We have also, you know, said, hey, we had the public exchanges, and we, we did try, we had stuff in the expos. We had stuff in all the newspaper, on our Facebook, on our website, on the Village website, et cetera. However, most of that concern is, "I still have my old tags, and I missed your public exchange dates, and I don't want to drive over to your office to exchange them now." So we simply say, mail them to us, we'll mail you new ones. And for some people, that's still not good enough. So in that case, we said, fine, use up the old tags, because they will go away. If it's tagged properly, we will take them. We actually had a cutoff date for the tags, but in our communications, we said, you know, we're trying, we're trying to give a little and go and be flexible as we go through this as well, so.
So the big trash cans, the 60-gallon trash cans that somebody might have, it's okay to use those as long as you're just putting two 30-gallon bag, or one 30-gallon bag in it?
You can put three 30-gallon bags in it.
I know, just tag.
Just take bags.
Okay. And I would like to apologize on behalf of Donnie for the way he sets his trash.
I'm embarrassed, I got caught. I thought I had a good program.
And again, I don't, you know, this is a snapshot. There are many, many people who are doing a wonderful job complying and doing, you know, doing it right. And we want to thank them, we want to say thank you. We know it was a little inconvenient to go through a tag exchange and those types of things, but to those people, we say thank you. And for the ones that are a little bit slower coming on board, we say, "We're here to help you. If you would like to call us, we will be more than happy to answer your questions or concerns." It is difficult to communicate with you via Facebook and try to explain what's happening. The information is out there, but we always reply with, "Please call us," so we can talk to you and discuss what your actual question or concern is.
Where would this process go with curbside recycling?
Well, you know what, I was thinking, where do I bring that up? A curbside recycling would be a very, very beneficial program here, from what I've seen. And of course, that's for later discussion and development, but yes, it would definitely be a very, very good program. Lots of recyclables. Anything else I can help with? I appreciate your time again, and please know that anyone in our organization is available to you for questions or concerns.
Moving on to committee reports. Street Committee. Alright, I'll try to speed through Street Committee here. We met all the way back on May 5. The issue before Street Committee was a request for a sidewalk consideration from Fairway Lane Intersection going north on Lawrence to Homecoming Park. This was brought to us by a citizen who eventually moved into the Indian Hills subdivision and was concerned about little ones walking on Lawrence to the Homecoming Park area. We had good discussion about how Tom Haw handled sidewalks, both new and repaired sidewalks. And at the end of the day, I think the Street Committee was comfortable in moving forward the recommendation that Tom Haw placed this section of concern on his 2015 sidewalk list for new.
East side only, correct?
Correct.
East side?
On the park side.
Sure. On the park side.
It's just a connecting.
Right.
There's some existing sidewalks that end.
It looks like both sides are, I want to make sure, it's set east side.
And if Tom Haw could stretch the dollars far enough, we'll put them on both sides, you know, maybe, I don't know.
Uner addition too.
Uner addition too, yes.
2016.
But that's, that's, that's the recommendation coming out of Street Committee today is, put that on the 2015 to-do list. Alright. Motion to accept the reported recommendations of the Street Committee?
Second. Tom Matthews made a motion with Heather Coast seconding to place that on the 2015.
Street Committee.
Street Committee. Any discussion? Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Council Matthews?
Yes.
Huna?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
All in favor?
I almost voted twice on that issue. All in favor, I almost died.
Oh, motion carries.
There you go.
Moving on to Park Board. Phew, Park Board, we met on May 13. Kim Reed came into Park Board from Northwestern Ohio Community Action. And she came to talk to Park Board about using one of the shelter houses at Reared Park for the lunch program during the summer. She provided us good information on numbers of past years as to how many lunches they've served. And she's really optimistic that they'd be able to serve more lunches if they had a location in a centrally-located park, which brought their attention to Reared Park. Park Board looked at the shelter house schedule, and Potawatomi was available during the targeted timeframe. And Kim Reed even said if a paying customer were to come and wanted to use Potawatomi during a scheduled time that they had, they would kindly move to a shelter house that was not being used. So, sounds like they're offering some flexibility as well. So, Park Board is recommending that the Northwestern Ohio Community Action Group make use of the Potawatomi Shelter House during that targeted time to feed the children with some lunches.
Quick question, Shane. Was there any conversation about them sort of picking up after?
Was there any conversation about them sort of picking up after themselves each day or does the city have to go in?
Definitely. She is, Kim stated that they would like to leave the shelter house suitable for somebody else to come in and use.
And Dave was at that meeting and he said that they would make sure that the communication was good on that so that they would know what they had to do.
Please themselves.
Right.
And Park Board always continues to toss around the idea of a dog park, some other topics that they talked about. I'm looking into recycling containers out of Biddle Park. I'm working with some county folks to see if we can't free up some grant dollars to place recycling containers out of Biddle Park. That's about it, Doug, or Mayor?
Motion to accept the Park Board's recommendations.
Second. Fred Allen made a motion with Heather Coast seconding to accept the Park Board, or, yeah. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes, Mankie.
Huner?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
All in favor? Or motion carries.
Don't let these people pick on your life.
I have been continuing to look into and pursue a downtown revitalization grant for downtown Waseanak we did in 2013 under Glenn Grisdale's direction with Revoli. I've been speaking with city council members, trying to garner some support, get some ideas for some community-based projects in the downtown area. Also, I've walked the downtown area, taken pictures and inventoried the downtown for building facades and location of ADA compliance and non-compliance. I've created an ADA inventory that I've submitted around to try to get some quotes for. I just wanted to stress a couple things as we get further into this and into the, the funding commitment realm of this whole process. There's a project information sheet that I've been looking off of here and it is from fiscal year 2012, but a lot of this information has not changed for fiscal year 2014. One of the points that it addresses is, "Please provide proposed project sources and uses, including the amount of CDBG assistance, loan or grant that will be requested and the amount sourced, structured loan or grant of matching funds. All non-CDBG project funds must be committed. The intended local government applicant should also include the estimated total project cost calculated with the required federal prevailing wage rates. CDBG can fund no more than 50% of the project, not to exceed $250,000. But CDBG is not required to be 50% of building cost. Eligible costs include facade improvements and the correction of code violations. Improvements must address identified substandard conditions." That $250,000, I believe, is the, the grant ceiling prior. It is now $300,000. But basically, what I'm getting from this is there is a 50% match that is required from other funds that are non-CDBG funds. That question's been asked a couple times. I've just been reading over some of this new information and I wanted to make sure that that information was out there. So some of the funding opportunities that we have, that I've been expressing through the revolving loan fund as a grant, that money can be used. I've sent some information out, shared it with Tom McWaters and some other folks, that that language is located in a consolidated plan for fiscal year 2014 that urges and requires that monies to be drawn down and used for eligible CDBG projects. So I'm asking or urging that we designate some of that money for that, especially since there is a match requirement to be qualified for this grant. Other than that, I'm diligently working and trying to organize and make sure that we submit a good application and requesting any support or letters of recommendations for that.
Does he know that we're working on?
We did. We did put together a letter of support. Counselor hasn't had a chance to fully look that over yet for wording. We'll also provide that to the mayor and Mr. McWaters so that they can look that over as well.
And I've also talked to Neil in the chamber and he offered a letter of support also on behalf of the downtown stakeholders. I've been searching around, going to talk with the county commissioners also about them putting some money in also from their RLF balances. If we can get that match up to a higher amount, what I'm seeing and what I'm requesting, which I'm thinking that we have a good chance to move forward with this grant. Again, it is highly competitive. I just want to make sure that that's clear and there's going to be other folks all around the state applying for it. I think 12 last year, three, I know three were approved, Defiance, someplace south and someplace east of Cleveland yet. Some were the max 300,000. I think one of them was 160,000. So the Defiance is the closest, closest.
So what you're saying is along with the letter of support, you need to have a commitment, probably a five-year commitment from the city stating that they will allocate some designated funds for this project.
That's just going to help the leverage of the, of the project or the program or the grant application. It's just going to help leveraging scoring. So I mean, if we do, if we get denied this year, it's just another piece of the puzzle that's in place so when we apply for it next year. Glenn put a good template down for me to start from. It's just building upon that until we finally get some funding up here and we can do some things and create some good projects to move forward on. Good job, David. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Desperate in Waseanak.
And it's not about making it look desperate.
But that's what I mean, we almost have to make ourselves look like, you know.
Well, what I'm figuring it out or figuring out with the state is creating just a good rapport with them, communicating with them. They're giving me a lot of good feedback and I think they see that there's some activity up here. Looking at the application last year compared to hopefully what I can get together and submit it for this year, it's going to be night and day. So hopefully that opens some eyes down there and I'm getting some good nods, so I'm hoping that's the case. So if not this year, I'll try next year.
Continuation.
It's, it's only involves my time and then some money. There's some money involved and commitment, so.
And your filing date was June?
June 20th.
20th?
Yeah, I believe at 5:00 PM. It's due down to the state. And that's an online web application this year. That's new. It should be a lot smoother to get through. I have to keep all the clunky stuff in my office for review. If we get monitored or audited, they can come up and get everything. And then all the, the application stuff will just be web based. Hopefully that's streamlined.
Because the other night on TV, there was a news channel reporting of a community saying they have got it already. So there's no chance that they've got it. They probably just have filed for it maybe?
Yeah, they could, they could have already submitted it, the online applications. They went online May 5.
Okay.
Now, if all the, I mean, the online application for the first time ever went online May 5. So if all the bugs are worked out, I don't know. I have my password username. I have yet to delve into that, but.
Well, I just figured that probably the.
The allocation programs, that money has been a.
Word of it and they figured that maybe it's already passed because the news person never interviewed anybody. They were just standing there talking about.
Right. Well, it's the allocation program money, that's been awarded. So we have like the Fulton County received $100,000 and that's based on a low moderate income population in the county. The downtown revitalization.
The city itself or the city of itself received?
The ci, any cities that are applying for downtown revitalization money through the Community Development Block Grant Program, awards won't be known until September, August this year.
Okay. Thanks, David.
Sure.
Moving on, Rick's next in line, but I'd like to congratulate you. I was opportunity to go to my daughter's graduation at Bowling Green a week ago and I'm going through here in Bachelor of Science in Fire Administration.
Yay.
Our chief graduate, a bachelor's degree in fire administration from Bowling Green this year.
Good for you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Your committee report now.
The, uh, this week, we're doing a couple programs in the school with the firefighter field program that we've organized through a private, a private company that has financed it through local businesses. So we'll be in there, we'll be in the schools Thursdays and Friday. Next Monday, we got the Memorial Day Parade that starts here at 9:30, I believe it is.
Yep.
And we'll be involved, Police Department Memorial Day Parade next Monday. And we had six members of the Fire Department complete Bowling Green State University Fire School this week in fire officer training and fire safety inspector training. Other than that, if any questions?
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I got an early training.
I know that.
Excuse myself.
Thanks, Ray. Chief Torbitt?
Uh, just a couple of things. Click it or Ticket campaign has kicked off here this week and on through June 1st. We will have extra officers out for that as well as graduation party coordinators through Party Choices Carrying Communities Coalition. They've allotted us $800 in overtime for additional patrols for each agency in the county. So we will be working with that. Our youth police academy is kicking off June 9th. Registrations are filling up. We will continue to take registrations up till the end of school, which is June 3rd. But if you have anyone that's 14 to 18 looking to get in it, have them put their applications in soon because we will only take 15 applicants through the program. And we're also working with the Fire Department to do some cross-training between the Fire Department. We had a couple issues. And just working out different topography areas and where to put officers, vehicles, how to set up proper landing zones and stuff like that. Issues that have come up from time to time and we're trying to work them out. I've got new officers, they've got new fire officers, so it's something that we need to work out from time to time. Scotty?
All right. Thank you. Dennis?
Spent almost all of last week doing structured interviews for the laborers position at the Public Works Department. We ended up doing, we had 18 applicants and 17 interviews. One person dropped out. Those will be scored hopefully yet this week. Then the Civil Service Commission needs to meet and certify the list and then the top three candidates would get called back for consideration, final consideration. Also issued a notice of award for the water reclamation plant, secondary digester lid replacement. We only had one bidder for that, but it was considerably under the engineer's estimate and it was, it was actually Motor Construction who did the last big project of the water reclamation plant. So we have firsthand knowledge of their quality and ability to stay within budget. Of course, we are ready to do the notice of award for the painting of the elevated storage tank up of Shup Avenue minus the question of one or two logos on the side. We can go ahead and do that and change it as a, or make that determination as a change order as we see fit and move forward. So long as the work doesn't begin on creating the logo, there shouldn't be any charts to delete the logos from the project. The other thing is the legislation, 2014-7 for the farm lease has been changed to an emergency so that we can get that handled and in place and make sure that the trees are saved for us rather than bulldozed and turned into farm ground.
Any questions? Jamie?
The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention is the income tax revenue for April that I cast out to you. I missed the last meeting, so I brought this tonight. Year to date, we are down 4%. There were some deposits in April that were not processed till May, so it should be a little higher than that. I'm hoping to have it back to normal this month. That's all you have.
All right, thank you.
Not much to report, continuing to work on some projects for various departments. I guess I would point out and just remind counsel that Mark Higgins will be serving as special counsel in connection with the rezoning request and budget proposal submitted by Mr. Dennis. So he will be serving as city law director with respect to those issues. And Mr. Higgins comes highly recommended. He's a village solicitor over in Archibald for a couple other issues penalties. So you'll enjoy working with Mark.
Thank you. Moving on to first reading of legislation. Resolution 2014-8, amend ordinance 2013-12, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the Director of Finance to increase or decrease certain line item account appropriations within the various funds listed within the year 2014. First reading.
Counselor Matthews made a motion with Counselor Allen's seconding to place on first reading. Any discussion? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Huner?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Fry?
Yes.
All in favor?
Six, vote 6-0.
Motion carries.
Second reading of legislation. Ordinance 2014-4, amending section 1301.08 of the codified ordinance of the City of Waseanak, require contractors to hold state licenses.
Second reading.
Second.
Counselor Huner made a motion with Counselor Coast seconding. Any discussion? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Huner?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Six-oh, motion carries.
Resolution 2014-6, authorizing the mayor to enter a mutual police aid agreement for emergency police services with surrounding municipal corporations.
Second reading.
Second.
Counselor Coast made a motion with Counselor Matthews seconding. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Huner?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Six-oh, motion carries.
Resolution 2014-7, authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm lease for the harvesting of trees and declared emergency.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and declare emergency on 2014-7.
Second. Counselor Huner made a motion with Counselor Coast seconding. Any discussion?
Hey Dennis, are they planning on moving some to Biddle yet? This planning season or?
Hopefully.
Because I see I'm staked out a little bit there.
Yeah. There's also a, which, shoulder strike, really, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Huner?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Six-oh, motion carries.
Final passage. Second.
I'm sorry, was that Fred? He made the second?
No, it was Fred.
Fred did? Okay. Counselor Chamberlain made the motion with Counselor Allen seconding. Any discussion? Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Huner?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Six-oh on final passage.
Third reading of legislation. Resolution 2014-5, authorizing the mayor to accept the conveyance by Brenner Properties LLP of 4.091 acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Arrowhead Trails subdivision. Third reading.
Second. Counselor Matthews made a motion with Counselor Coast seconding. Any discussion? Counselor Coast?[1743.87]
Yes.
Council Matthews?
Yes.
Council Huneur?
Yes.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Allen?
Yes.
Council Fry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to new business. City participation in downtown revitalization program. Need a motion to authorize the Director of Finance to reallocate $15,514 from the capital income tax account entitled Transfer Out, a big long number, to the capital income tax account entitled Downtown Development. Big long number.